This is the regular meeting of the Mobile City Council, Tuesday, July 16th. Please stand for the invocation led by Dr. Bobby Morton, Public Safety Chaplain, and remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance. Roll call. Councilmember Penn.
Here.
Councilmember Carroll. President Small.
Here.
Councilmember Reynolds.
Here.
Councilmember Dave. Councilmember Woods.
Here.
Vice President Gregory, your statement of rules.
Good morning, everyone. It's good to see everybody this morning. Welcome to our July 16th, 2020-2024 meeting. At this meeting, we do have rules. At this time, I ask if anyone has any type of electronic device, including their cell phones, please at this time put on the off or the barbary position, the off or the barbary position. Interpersonated desiring to address the council must sign in indicating the ordinance, the resolution, or public hearing agenda item before entering the meeting. When addressing the council, the speaker must give his or her name. Interpersonated desiring to speak to the council on a non-agenda item must contact the City Clerk office no later than 2:00 PM the Thursday prior to the council meeting. The subject that he or she wishes to express to the council must be identified and retained to the City of Mobile business. Anyone who has not given proper notice to the City Clerk office and wishes to speak on a non-agenda item would not be allowed to address the council. Each speaker is allowed three minutes to address the council. Each bell will sound to indicate the end of two minutes. One minute will remain for summarizing. The second bell indicates that your time has expired. When addressing the council, there has to be no person to address to any individual council members. All statements are to be made to the chair who will recognize any council member who wishes to respond. To maintain decorum, there will be no undue applause and or public outcry allowed. Madam Clerk?
Approval of minutes of July 2nd and 9th.
So moved.
Second.
Properly moved and second in the discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Men's approved.
Communications from Mayor Stimson.
Bring greetings from Mayor Stimson, who is out of town, and there are no announcements from the mayor.
Adoption of the agenda.
Moved.
Second.
Properly moved and second in the discussion. Mr. Dave.
I'd like to move that we bring a certain item. I'd like to move that we bring a certain item to the top of the agenda, which is item...
Forty-six, 630.
Forty-six, 630. Thank you.
Could I get a second?
Second.
Properly moved and second in the discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
And it passes unanimously, which is why I am here this morning. As you read on the agenda, this is a resolution to honor a local man who has been a coach and community leader throughout the city and especially in his community of Hillsdale. We are making an honorary... We are naming a street in honor of Coach John Bumpers. It will be on Biloxi Avenue, and it will be called Coach John Bumper's Way. He did have a long career, I didn't realize, but he had coached for Mobile Parks and Rec, and a lot of his students at Mobile Parks and Rec went on to play basketball at Blunt, where he also coached. Like I said, he is well-known in the community, and a number of his students had reached out to me to ask me about doing this honor for Coach Bumpers, and I'm really happy to do it. Behind me, we have a group of his former students. Y'all come on down. Gary Lawson is the speaker of the group. And I'm going to ask Gary if he will introduce everybody.
Good morning.
Good morning.
We have Loretta Donaldson, Sandra Jackson, Felicia Lett, and Gregory Shakur. Former students, right.
Well, it's my pleasure to be able to make this presentation to the former students honoring Coach John Bumpers with naming Biloxi Avenue in his honor. This is it. And we'll be putting that up probably within a couple of days, so we'll have the official sign up within a couple of days, and everybody can see it. Thank you so much for doing this and being part of the community. Anybody want to say anything about the coach, and just any details or stories that you might have?
Well, I believe that, you know, the reason why we did this is because of Coach Bumpers, the way that he treated all of us, a lot of our people in our community. They were in single-parent homes, and he was like a father figure. He wasn't just in the school, but he was in our community. And I believe that if we had more people that would come into the communities as well as teach, you know, just showing our people the way to go, you know, that's what he did. And he didn't just teach us how to play basketball, but he taught us how to treat one another. He taught us how to treat other people, and if we all could just remember those things, and we look around our community, we all could be better. You know, that's why we're striving to teach our children, and that's why we want this sign up, so every time we talk about Coach Bumpers, everybody will see, well, he has a street named after him in the place where the school was. You know, we wanted to get the school, but of course, we couldn't do that, so we just want to thank you.
Thank you so much, and that's exactly what I heard about Coach Bumpers, about the kind of man he was, the kind of leader he was in working with all of the students. And that's why this group is here, because they remember what he did for them. So this is a terrific honor for a really wonderful man.
And right before you honor that, Vice President, we need to read a item out.
And suspend the rules.
Yeah, we suspend the rule. Okay, yeah.
We just did it.
Yeah.
Let's make it official then.
Resolution forty-six, 630, honorarily rename Biloxi Avenue to Coach John Bumper's Way.
Second.
Properly moved and second in the discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I think that was definitely unanimous.
All opposed, and congratulations.
Appeals. We have requests for waivers of the noise ordinance at 300 Contas Street on October 10th from 5:00 PM till 7:30 PM, at 2301 Airport Boulevard on August 4th from 12:00 PM until 6:00 PM, and at Medal of Honor Park on July 20th from 4:00 PM until 7:00 PM.
So moved.
Second. Properly moved and second in the discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Appeal passes.
Public hearings. Today is the public hearing to fix cause for demolition of the structures at 1826 Idell Street and 1863 Mott Drive South.
This opens up the public hearing for these particular said item. Is anyone present that would like to address the council? If not, these public hearings are closed.
Today is the public hearing to consider the application of quality care on wheels to operate a shuttle service.
This opens up the public hearing for this particular said item. Is anyone present that would like to address the council on this item? If not, this public hearing is closed.
Presentation of petitions and other communications to the council, Denisha Logan.
Ms. Logan, present. Madam Clerk?
Lisa Taggart.
Line this mic on.
Hello? Hey. Good morning, everybody. My name is Lisa Taggart, Executive Director of Doris Renity. This is... This is the third time I've been in front of y'all. I've asked the legal counsel to give me the copy of the settlement for the opioid abatement funds that were received, and I still have not received that from the legal department on how the settlement states that we should spend the money. It was promised to me within five days of my first appearance here, and I have not yet received it, and I don't understand the delay. And then also, the opioid abatement funds have not been able to be applied for yet, except today, you're talking to Helios Group to get $250,000 from the fund, which they've already received $250,000 in January to create an app which would use AI to tell you guys where to spend the money. And I believe that there's already been studies on where the money needs to be spent, and one of them is there's no beds, there's no homes for these people to go to. Alter Point has a beautiful crisis center where people could go to detox. After they detox, they're going back into their same environment where they use drugs because there's no beds, like my house, to fulfill the need here. I ask that you open up these funds so that people that are in need can be served in our community. Right now, I serve 18 people. My beds are full. I have a waiting list of over 47 people. The last time I told you that I knew personally of four people who have died of the opioid, of an opioid death, there's another four people. I had a call from a police officer that said, "We're taking somebody out of this apartment." This is the fourth person we've taken out of this apartment who has died of opioids. It is a major crisis in our city, and I hope that the city council is aware of that and that we already know where the money needs to be spent, and we don't need to spend another $250,000 to tell us where the money needs to go. Thank you so much for your time, and I really appreciate this. This is a serious matter.
Mr. President.
Uh, Mr. Carroll.
Sounds like there are two questions. One, of the administration, she asked for the report and said that she hasn't gotten it. Is there any reason why it hasn't been given?
I'll be glad to look into it when Ricardo gets back, but a lot of settlement agreements are not public records, and so we'll just have to find out if there's a confidentiality on that settlement.
And the second statement that I think I heard is she said that there was a $250,000 contract with another source for an app or program that says how to use the money, and I guess her question is, why is the city duplicating the same $250,000 for apple process on how to use the money?
I'm unaware of the $250,000 commitment that she's referring to.
I think, did you say Porch Creek?
Porch Creek Indian gave Helios Groups $250,000 in January when they had this big hoopla press release.
And this is for the state of Alabama for the program, or is it nationwide?
It was for the... The Porch Creek Indians received $250,000 for the opioid funds, and they gave it to Helios to invest in this. So I don't know why we need to invest another $250,000 for an AI app that's not going to tell us anything that we already know.
So you're saying they already have an app because it was already paid for. When we get to this item, it seems like we may have to dig a little bit to make sure that we're doing the right thing. I don't know where the administration is or the council, but based on what I'm hearing, I want to make sure, if it only takes a couple of days, if there's not already an app, and if we should be paying for it again. And if we can to the administration, let's please get her the information that we need. I guess I'm asking y'all now, would it be prudent to hold this over, we can find out about this app that's already out there?
I'm aware of a partnership between the Porch Creek Indians and Helios. Putting money toward artificial intelligence is not what we're doing. We're actually engaging Helios as a third-party contractor or consultant to administer the funds for the opioid settlement, so it's totally different. They'll be the ones that are doing the RFP for us on behalf of the City of Mobile.
Was other groups allowed to participate in this RFP, and was it announced in a timely manner? I'm sorry.
Yeah, Mr. Carroll, you finished?
Yeah, I'm fine. I didn't, you know, I don't know if you can talk back and forth during this.
I'm sorry.
But I don't think you can. I think that the program they're setting up is for the applicants to respond to an RFP that's... That is direct, that is, I would say explicitly for the City of Mobile and not just anywhere else. I don't know if the one for the Porch Creek Indians was explicitly for their environment or what they're doing, but it may be that is explicitly for the city, and you would respond to the RFP, and then they would score that based on what the needs are in this city and how the funds are to be expended. And I'm assuming that's how it's going to go, based on what I've heard over the last three weeks.
Vice President?
Yes, sir. I think what Councilman Carroll said is correct, that what we were... What Ms. Taggart is talking about with the Porch Creek Indians has nothing to do with what we are doing. What we are doing is putting together a contract so that the RFP can actually go out, so that your group and others can then apply to this RFP. So that's what this is about today.
Mr. President.
Uh, Mr. Reynolds.
This makes sense, in my opinion, that we engage with this expert in this field. The speaker says, you know, the problem is, we need Narcan, we need beds, you know, others say we need mental health and, you know, many other categories, and then you have all these various providers of all these things. So, you know, we're talking about $2 million, so what do you mean, you just divvy out a little bit to everybody? Is that the most effective means? I don't think so. So I think engaging this professional, you know, that can analyze the most effective use to fight the problem that is specifically outlined in the settlement agreement is probably a wise step, and, you know, they... No telling what they come back with. They may say that, you know, we need more police officers. They may, you know, there's no telling. So once they establish that structure, they can then begin to write RFPs to address these specific items that they find, you know, in their due diligence, and some of it may land in a way that fits your organization, where you can supply those, you know, needs to your folks. But I don't think anybody here on the city council or within the city are, you know, necessarily experts in the field, so I think it's wise use of money to establish, you know, protocols that are going to be effective. So thank you for coming down again today.
Mr. President?
Uh, Mr. Penn.
Thank you, Mr. President, and thank you, Mrs. Taggart, for coming down. Some of the concerns that you had, I brought that in pre-council as well, kind of want to understand exactly how the money was going to be spent, and I have a better understanding as well, is that some of the questions that you stated, you know, getting the RFPs out, now we'll have someone that able to vet, to able to get that information out now as quick as possible, because now we can start that process, and so now you'll be able to receive a lot of that information that you have been requesting, and now you can apply as well. And so I just want to let you know, we did talk about that as well in pre-council today, and I agree with Councilman Reynolds, we need someone that has expertise in that particular area so we can get those funds out properly. So thank you so much for coming down.
Thank you, Ms. Taggart.
Reggie Hill regarding Resolutions 01624, 01618, and 25625.
Thank you, Madam Assistant City Clerk to citizens and stakeholders of Mobile. Greetings, Reggie Hill is my name. Let's begin, please, with 25625. This is a Gulf of Aidsman. This project is being overseen by Mr. Shane Allen, who's a member of the Board of Directors for Success for the Future, so I hope that this will go off quite easily and just pass through unanimously. Now, let's look at 01624, please. I'm appreciative of Ms. Taggart coming down and expressing what I actually shared last week as to how we're confused on outside entities coming in and vetting this. I'd much rather see, we have one of the most awesome grant departments in the Gulf Coast region, probably within the entire state, and Ms. Laura Angle, who manages most of these grants, I believe she has the expertise to determine who these resources might be able to go to. That might be something that we can look into as well, because what's alarming, if you look at Section 1 of the scope of work in this contract with Helios, it states that Helios will further refine its prior work to consider additional relevant Mobile specific data, thus paying a third party for doing work for existing organizations have already been doing. So that part doesn't really make any sense to me, and I think we could use the money better instead of giving the experience to this organization, maybe within the city, which already works. Let's move, please, to 01618, and this is the contract potentially with University of South Alabama and the Mobile County Health Department. Subsection 2 says the city will appropriate $360,000, but reporting from media outlets as well as members of the reported administration suggests that this is a $1.1 million project. So where the confusion is with me, where are we getting the additional $740,000? Now, this coming from ARP, because supposedly, if it is, this means that it would not have to come back before this body, but I thought we all were the stewards of the resource, and it would have to be approved in this manner. They can propose it, but it has to be approved here. Subsection 9 says, "It's unclear how USA will reasonably evaluate participating nonprofits." What guarantee do we have the USA won't recklessly discriminate against particular organizations as we each know the city has already done? We can take organizations that are waiting for resources from 2021 that have already been approved, so this is stuff that's valid and on the record. Let's look at as well, for sake of time, subsection 10, it says, "The city does not and will not assume any responsibility for how USA operates HVIP, but on the contrary, USA shall be wholly responsible therefore." So that means we're going to pay them, and then whatever happens, it just happens. It doesn't matter. We're going to spend $1.1 million. Now, I don't really think it's fair to say that we're truly just as concerned with public safety as we would be, because we seen how we had a leader who was directing us in the past, but then recklessly and irregular, probably unlawful, definitely in undue process fashion, we terminated his contract. We all know who that is, so we don't have to necessarily mention the name. So I would like to see us see, because subsection 15 says, "Neither party shall be responsible for delay or failure to perform." We had an opportunity last week at a public safety committee, we waived these rules for everything else, but we didn't even waive at the rules for the people sitting up there to discuss what's going on with this contract for $1.1 million. So maybe we can send this back to the committee as well. Have to finish later. Thank you on the floor.
Leanne Carr regarding Resolution 54622.
Good morning, councilmembers. I'm Leanne Carr. As President Emeritus of Land Fair Yester Oaks Association, I want to thank you guys for providing our neighborhood with the opportunity to share our thoughts and feelings regarding the reinstallation of a gate at South Claridge Road. I am certain that you all have heard about the many non-resident speeding vehicles, the wrecks on Claridge Curves, the resulting damaged street signs and landscaping, all despite our efforts to address issues with cameras and additional speed humps. However, I'd like to present from a slightly different perspective this morning. Although I was not born and raised in Mobile, Alabama, I've lived here for 30 years, raised my children here, raised my grandchildren now. I have witnessed an incredible growth and change within our city through all of these years. And as a growing prosperous city, we have had to make many changes and improvements to accommodate the needs of our population. The McGregor Road Project, with the implementation of its roundabouts and additional street width, is a perfect example of our city's attempts to create solutions to improve traffic flow. Cities, and even subdivisions, need to change with the times, and change is not a bad thing if its purpose is to improve lives, safety, and the lifestyle of our community. Our neighborhood is asking for the same kind of change, a change to improve and to protect. We are quite an evolved neighborhood. Many third and fourth generation families have returned to live in our neighborhood, just as their parents and grandparents before them. We have witnessed and experienced this neighborhood change from young homeowners, who eventually became the old homeowners, and back to the young homeowners, bringing lots of children, bicycles, skateboard, scooters, back into our neighborhood, full circle. Originally, even before the significant increase in cars and general transportation, there was a gate that existed at Claridge Road South, which clearly had a purpose of ceasing outside cut-through traffic. Today, as our young families return with their children, and in times that have increased the number of vehicles and nearby commercial attractions, we are faced with a major influx of non-resident traffic through Claridge Road South and North. As we've become a young neighborhood once again, we as parents and grandparents would love to see our children and grandchildren safely traversing our neighborhood to play at each other's homes.
Time.
Thank you. Three sentences? Thank you. Without fear for them, to be able to... For them to play without fear. As a parent who has lost a child, I am asking for the council to please consider the reinstallation of the South Claridge Gate that was originally put in place to protect our children and residents, our residents who call this home. It is a beneficial change that is truly worthy of the council's attention. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hope Harrell regarding Resolution 54622.
Good morning. My name is Hope Harrell, and I'm a resident of Land Fair, Yester Oaks neighborhood. We live in a neighborhood that was voted the most kin-friendly neighborhood in Mobile, but we have a very serious safety concern for our children and the residents of our neighborhood, because our neighborhood has become a service road from Airport to Dauphin. As you know, the traffic study we discussed last week validated our concerns. 1,700 cars went through that intersection in just one day. But here's the thing, that study was done in late May and early June, and school ended in our community on May 23rd. It will only get worse when school starts back, and it will only get worse when Dauphin and McGregor actually close for the progress our city is due. I hope that you've taken the time to read the statistics and the letters and the testimonials that were presented by my neighbors and given to you last week, the heartfelt concerns expressed by them because of the issue that's facing our neighborhood. We could sit here for the next several moments and brainstorm about what another solution would be, but members of the council, there's just really not one. Tickets from law enforcement haven't worked. Signs saying no through traffic and speed bumps haven't worked. Ask yourselves, if the gate is not the answer, what is? What is another reasonable and attainable and plausible solution to this problem? And I'm here to tell you that the gate is the only answer. In both the apartments and the neighborhoods, there are young families with children and senior citizens that have lived there for many years. A death should not have to occur... A death should not have to occur from a speeding vehicle for this issue to get the attention that it deserves and we are so grateful for the time that you've dedicated considering our request. Replacing the gate is really the only remedy and safety should never be the sacrifice for convenience. We're asking for your help and we thank you so much for your time.
Thank you.
Mr. President?
Today.
Thank you all for being here. Would everyone that supports this resolution please stand up? I appreciate you all taking the time to be here today to show your support for this resolution. As we heard last week, Mr. President, we have a petition signed by over 1,000 residents of this neighborhood asking for this gate to be reinstalled. It's a serious safety hazard with 1,700 cars a day passing through these streets that were not designed to handle that kind of traffic. So thank you all for being here today. I hope the council will support this resolution.
Michael Meeks regarding Resolution 4480.
My name is Michael Meeks. I'm here in special appearance. I reserve all my rights. I established in the last meeting that there's errors in the list pending that was originally filed on the property. We established that no lawsuit was ever filed, therefore no hearing ever took place, no court order was ever granted. Subsequent notice, notices used in a wronguous legal description. The Code of Alabama Title 1147, 117 allows all cities and towns of this state shall have the power to prevent injury or annoyance from anything dangerous or offensive or unwholesome and to cause all nuisance to be abated. Cause in this sense means lawsuit. The very following statute, 1147, 118 states municipalities may maintain a civil action to enjoy and abate any public nuisance injurious to health, morals, comfort, or welfare of the community or the portion thereof. So again, ma, civil action is also referring to lawsuit, if you look up the legal definition. And it says enjoying. No notice was ever sent identifying 1107 or 1110 Oak Street. State statute requires posting notice on or within three feet of the entrance of the building. There was no notice posted on either one of those structures. There was no notice posted on the fountain, which would take about $25,000 to $30,000 that was damaged. And there's another small structure, again, no notice was posted. The only notice ever posted was on 1111 Spring Hill Avenue. And every notice that went out said 1111 Spring Hill Avenue. The Code of Alabama Title 6, Chapter 5, Section 121 distinguishes between public and private nuisance. Personally, I think this was a private nuisance and you would need to produce an injured person. If I'm correct, all your abatement of private property through a public nuisance claim is fraud. If the city rightfully classified it as a public nuisance, that must be abated by a process instituted by the name of the state. The court is held in Dozier versus Troy Drive emptyators that the Attorney General is the proper state official to bring action to abate public nuisances. I continue to say there's procedural error and the fact that they didn't post the notice on the building. So this would fall back on the checking halls of the Constitution because you've lost any jurisdiction and I'm due for the appraised value. There's also another state statute that says if you fail to return my property, I offered, actually I offered, I submitted a settlement offer to the city of Mobile along with the claim for my loss of property at a fair value of $100,000. That settlement offer has since expired and since the actual property has been destroyed and cannot be returned, my remedy according to the state of Alabama Title 35, Chapter 13, Section 8 shall be double the amount of the appraised value. If you'd like to sell this matter out of federal court, I'm hoping and willing to do this in a hearing setting or some sort of mediation.
Time. Any questions are coming from this council. All right, thank you.
Ordinances held over. 39-041 ordinance to amend Sections 39-96.1C and D2 of the Mobile City Code to change noise ordinance cutoff time in residential districts into codified procedures for applications.
So moved.
Second. Proper moving second and discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
No.
No.
Opposed.
Item fail. Madam Clerk?
Consent resolutions held over. 4480 and 4481 are fixing costs for demolition of the structures at 1107 and 1109 Spring Hill Avenue and 1111 Spring Hill Avenue.
So moved.
Second. Proper moving second and discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? I don't pass.
Resolution is held over. 01-617 authorized rights-of-way use agreement for Unity Fiber Golf Co.
So moved.
Second.
Proper moving second and discussion.
Yes, sir, Mr. President. I'd like to offer an amendment that's on file with the clerk's office regarding non-substantive legal wording for this contract.
Second. Proper moving second amendment and then discussion on amendment. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, amendment passed. Going back to the original and another discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? I don't pass.
If there's no objection, I'll take all except for 25-625 together. 01-618 authorized agreement with the University of South Alabama for hospital-based violence intervention program. 03-619 appoint Stephen McNair and Borgia Wilson to the Architectural Review Board. 08-620 and 621 are approving purchase orders to Power DMS for annual renewal of management software and to Nixon Power Services for cover for emergency generator. 54-622 authorized closure of a portion of public road on Yester Oaks Drive South of its intersection with Claridge Road South. 01-624 authorized agreement with the Helios Alliance for consulting services.
So moved.
Second.
Proper moving second and then discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? I don't pass.
25-625 grant a permanent easement to Mobile County for public golf path.
Moves table.
Second.
Proper moving second and discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? I don't take.
Ordinance is being introduced. 88-042.
Move to waive the rules for immediate consideration of this ordinance as read.
Second.
Proper moving second and discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Madam Clerk?
88-042 ordinance donating certain city property to Mobile County for the purpose of a public golf path.
So moved.
Second.
Proper moving second and then discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? I don't pass.
CIP resolutions being introduced. 21-650.
Move to lay over till next week per council rules.
Consent resolutions being introduced. 03-627 through 60-636.
Move to waive the rules for immediate consideration of these resolutions as read with the exception of 60-635, which we need to take separately.
Second.
Proper moving second and then discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Madam Clerk?
03-627 appoint Lawrence Wittermark to the Mobile Museum of Art Board. 40-628 and 629 are fixing costs for demolition of the structures at 1826 Idell Street and 1863 Mott Drive South. 60-631 and 632 are approving award of special bonus to the firefighter of the month and the officer of the month. 60-633, 634, and 636 are determining appropriations to mothers involved against gun violence and Inverness subdivision homeowners association serve a public purpose and approve payment.
So moved.
Second.
Proper moving second and then discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? I don't pass.
60-635 determine an appropriation to the Boys and Girls Club of South Alabama serves a public purpose and approve payment.
So moved.
Second.
Proper moving second and then discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Abstained.
I don't pass.
Resolutions being introduced. 01-637 through 60-654.
Move to waive the rules for immediate consideration of Resolution 09-646 with the rest of these being laid over for a week.
Second.
Proper moving second and then discussion.
Also 37-653 is going to be tabled.
Oh. Just hold that one separately, yeah, and waive the rules.
Okay.
Yes.
09-646.
We're going to waive those.
In other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Madam Clerk?
09-646 transfer funds from general fund mayor's discretionary contributed contract services to CIP Old Shell Road overpass, $25,000.
So moved.
Second.
Proper moving second and then discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? I don't pass.
37-653 deny business license application for Slurp Society Ramen Shop.
Motion table.
Second.
Proper moving second and then discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? All is tabled.
Call for public hearings. 41-655 call for public hearing to rezone property located at the south side of Coiman Road west of Pot Acres Drive, scheduled for August 20th. And 41-656 call for public hearing to consider the application of Bennett's Care to operate a shuttle service scheduled for July 30th.
So moved.
Second.
Proper moving second and then discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Public hearings called.
Announcement.
District 1, Councilman Penn?
Thank you, Mr. President. This past weekend, I had an opportunity to attend a back-to-school bash located in District 1, so I want to thank Target, Starbucks, Aldi for being a part of all these different great things taking place in our community as well as District 1. This Saturday, we have a great event taking place as well at LaFlore Stadium. It's called the 2024 Coach and Councilman Combine. It's an opportunity for boys and girls to come and receive training from coaches. And so it's for ages seven through 12. You can go to my personal page as well as it is in my newsletter, how to register and sign up. It's free. You'll receive a free T-shirt and it's something that we were doing to give back to our community. We also have a back-to-school bash again at Figures Park on July the 27th. And then we have a Mob Jam Fest for the family at the Michael Dow Amphitheater on July the 28th. So we have a lot of great things taking place in District 1. I'm District 1, you're District 1, we're District 1. So thank you, District 1, for allowing us to be able to serve in this capacity. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Penn. District 2, Councilman Carroll. No announcements. District 4, Councilman Reynolds? District 5, Councilman Davis?
Thank you, Mr. President. I would like to thank my colleagues for approving the resolution to install that gate. This is a matter which has been an issue for a long, long time for the folks of Landfair, Southeastern Oaks. It's, that, as I said last week, that arrangement should never have been approved by the city of Mobile to begin with. It's been an open sore for a long time. The closure of McGregor Avenue has just made it worse and I want to thank my colleagues for agreeing to that today. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Councilman Davis. District 6, Councilman Woods. No announcements. District 7, Vice President Gregory.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have to give a big shout out to a couple of the youth baseball teams in my district. The Hillsdale Six and Under Boys are the state champions and the Municipal National League All-Stars are state champions and they, this is eight and under, and they are heading to the World Series in Orangeburg, South Carolina. So a lot of baseball talent in District 7 and citywide. This past weekend, I participated in a community-wide cookout in Mobile Terrace. The Cody Road Girls got together and put together this cookout all to help honor Joyce Chavers as well as to bring the community out. So many thanks to that group and Felicia McCarty in particular for her role in coordinating everything. It was a wonderful day. It was great to see everybody. So thank you to everyone who participated.
And I'd like to thank the citizens of District 3. It was a great pleasure on last Thursday to join the mayor at a press conference in the district on Chautauqua Street. The Missus Serv, which is our organization, consists of many people across the country from California all the way to Georgia and came out to spruce up people's homes by painting and also doing roofs. It was a privilege for me to be out there in the heat with the mayor and also the workers and I'd like to thank those workers for coming to our great city to help to spruce up our neighborhoods. And also this coming Friday, looking forward to attending the festival at Taylor Park dealing with DJ Roski and Mob Fest at the event at Taylor Park this coming Friday and looking forward to it. Anything from the administration?
Motion to adjourn.
Proper moving second and then discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Means adjourn.